All right, for anyone online, we're going to keep the public comment section open. Sign up, go to our website. And the link to sign up for public comment will be open through the meeting opening until we approve the agenda. And then we will close the link for public comment. And with that, good evening. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Tonight is Monday, January 25th, 2021. Tonight, we are hosting a hybrid meeting via Zoom as well as live in the Brandywine High School Auditorium. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call?
President.
Mr. Sproback.
Here.
Dr. Zarek.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Ms. Pision.
Here.
Reverend Perry.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Zarek to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. At this time, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Guess that didn't take as long as I thought. We will close the signup link. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to do that. And just another reminder, the chat section is turned off. We do not have the ability to answer questions in the chat, but it should be off, so that should not be an issue. Tonight, we have a few special presentations and recognitions. First up is Concord High School 12th Grader Matthew Zubari, presented by Mr. Mark Overly, Principal of Carrcroft Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Mark Overly, Principal of Carrcroft Elementary School. It's my great pleasure to honor Matthew Zubari, a former Carrcroft student and now a senior at Concord High School. Matthew Zubari completed his final Eagle Scout project for the Boy Scouts by building and installing a Gaga pit for Carrcroft Elementary School. Kids have been so excited to play in it as they have returned to hybrid learning. Just take a look. Sorry. It was so impressive to see Matthew work through the process of completing this project. Through the meeting with me, to writing and submitting proposals to the Boy Scout Association, to designing and building it at his house, and then transporting it to Carrcroft, and finally organizing a crew to assemble and install at Carrcroft this past summer. The board and superintendent would like to thank you and honor you by sending you a certificate of appreciation. And from Carrcroft and myself, thank you, Matt. We're proud of you. And we're proud that you're a Carrcroft alum. And we're so proud that you'll be assumed to be a Brandywine School District graduate. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overly. Next month is Black History Month. We, as a board, decided a year or two ago to recognize this at our January meeting as opposed to our February meeting, which would essentially be at the end of the month. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Reverend Perry and Mr. Ackerman for our proclamation.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to share this with Reverend Perry. This is a very important month of the year coming up. African American Black History Month is an annual observance aimed at recognizing the significant roles of African Americans have contributed in our nation's history throughout their contributions in arts, entertainment, law, politics, science, sports, and so much more. Whereas the history of African American/Black History Month traces back to 1915, when the father of Black History Month, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founded the American I'm sorry, the Association for the Study of Black Life and History, what is now known as ASLA. Through their diligence and commitment to African American citizens, Dr. Woodson and ASLA introduced the first Black History Week in February 1926. Whereas February was chosen for this grand gesture of recognition to align with the birthdays of two celebrated supporters of African American citizens, Abraham Lincoln, the 16th President of the United States, and Frederick Douglass, an orator, writer, and abolitionist. Whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford issued the first African American History Month proclamation calling upon Americans to celebrate this observance each February. Since that time, each of our nation's presidents have issued proclamations to pay tribute to African Americans.
Whereas, for the first time since its inception, the thematic focus highlights and explores the black family, its representation, identity, and diversity. Although once regarded and ignored, there has been a significant increase in studies about the black family. Early research rooted in bias and in ignorance deemed black families as dysfunctional. However, later studies sought to disprove this mischaracterization and sought to prove alternative perspectives that accurately emphasize the brilliance, resilience, and adaptivity of African American families inundated with a myriad of social and economic hardships. Whereas, as public servants, administrators, educators, parents, concerned stewards of children, we recognize the complexities of the family units that we serve in the Brandywine School District, celebrate its diversity, and encourage everyone to do their part to nurture inclusion. Whereas, for the African American child, tapping into the common thread that has sustained and fortified the African American village from slavery to modernity can very well be the difference of life or death. For the African American child, the historical contextualization of the diversity, identity, and representation of their ancestry, cultural traditions, and shared stories can be a catalyst and motivation that plants seeds of greatness from which they originate and yield powerful, invaluable promise into who they can become. Therefore, be it resolved that on this 25th day of January, the Brandywine School District acknowledges February as African American and Black Heritage Month and encourage everyone to refer to the plethora of resources made available to us, not only in February, but celebrate them throughout the year.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. I hope everyone listening tonight will use February to celebrate and reflect during February. At this time, I welcome Dr. Lisa Lawson, Assistant Superintendent, and Ms. Beth Mattie, Coordinator of School Health Services, to discuss our health and wellness Brandywine School District contact tracing.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing Beth Mattie and I to present this evening. I would like to introduce you for probably the thousandth time to Ms. Beth Mattie, who has provided 37 years of service to the Brandywine School District. 16 of those years was as a nurse at Mount Pleasant High School, where she secured $150,000 in grant funding for the Knights Against Tobacco. She also was our past president of the National Association for School Nurses. That's a huge honor and award that she was very prominent in Delaware, and she became known across the state because of this award. She was also, she is, pardon me, newly appointed board member of School Based Health Alliance, which is another national organization that represents school-based health centers. And as you know, we have school-based health centers here in Brandywine. She's a fellow in the National Academy of Nursing. And then most recently in 2017, she was inducted into the University of Delaware's Wall of Fame, next to our newly elected president. So without further ado, I would like for Beth Mattie to share the contact tracing that we do here in Brandywine School District related to our global pandemic of COVID.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lawson, and thank you to the board for having me this evening. I look forward to telling you about what our nurses are doing to keep both students and staff safe. And it's just one tool in our toolbox, but this is the contact tracing that we're doing. So I'm going to go to the next slide. And talk about just exactly what it is that we're looking for. And you all know that we have, you know, desks facing in one certain direction, and we have, we constantly talk about social distancing, and we want everyone to wear a mask. Well, these are all the things that we're looking for when we are looking to see whether anyone has been exposed to a possible positive case of COVID. And when we say contact tracing, that means that when we find out about a positive case, we need to identify all of those people that may have been in close contact to someone who has a positive case and therefore at risk of getting sick. So the first thing, and these are the three elements that really are mostly, this is what we're looking for. You know, have you been within six feet of a person who's tested positive? Have you been with that person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period? So that doesn't mean that you have to be there for 15 minutes at a time. It could be three minutes here, two minutes here, five minutes here, and it adds up over the day. And then we look at whether you had a mask on or without a mask. And of course, we want everyone to wear a mask, and we hope that we never hear that, no, I didn't have my mask on. But these are the three things that we look at when we start to contact trace. So I want to go to the next slide. So this is the process that we follow. And so what happens is that we ask those of you that have, if you find out that you've tested positive, you get a test, and that it comes back to you, we ask that you all notify the school nurse. At that point, we set the wheels in motion. So the school nurse will talk to the person that maybe has identified as positive. Now, you think, now, would the Division of Public Health notify us if people have turned, have been tested positive? Well, what's happening, and I'm sure all of you know this, that have had a test, that there often is a lag time between two to five days around Thanksgiving and Christmas. It was in the holidays. It was more like five days. So there's a lag time from the time that you get your test till the time that you get your test results. Then there's another lag time between the time those test results get to the Division of Public Health. So we're asking everyone to please let the school nurse know if anyone tests positive. So when someone tests positive, we, the school nurse will gather as much information as possible from that positive individual. Now, if it's a student, we'll talk to the parent and get the information about when did they have symptoms. Because people are infectious two days before they get symptoms. So that's our timeline, two days before they get symptoms. If they don't have symptoms, it's two days before that positive test. And then with, as in the case from a student, the nurse will go and talk to, of course, the administrator and the teacher, because there are lots of things that are considered when we're looking to see, was there anyone that might have been close to this student to, that might possibly become infected? Now, the positive individual will ask to isolate. That means you stay home away from others. Don't go anywhere. If you can isolate from your family, stay in a room. Because that's the period of time, isolate for 10 days, that 10 days is the period of time that you're infectious. Now, what we're looking for is the contacts, that contact tracing, who might become infectious within two to 10 days after exposure. So we want to quarantine them, get them away from others in case they do become positive so that they don't infect anyone else. So then that's when we go to the administrator with a student. We might go to the teacher. We would definitely go to the teacher because if it's, especially if it's an elementary child, you know, we want to make sure that we have all the places, cover all the bases, that we know where that child is. And I, you know, I love seeing the pictures of the students as sitting in their desks facing forward, six feet apart. That's what we want to see with their mask on, because remember the three questions that we're looking at? Six feet apart? Did you have a mask? Was it longer than 15 minutes? So then we have to look at where has the child been? What's the schedule? Who was in the cafeteria? Who did they, who were they next to in the cafeteria? Did they go to PE? Do they ride the bus? Are there specialists that come into the classroom that work with people? All of these things really take time. So once the school nurse, now, so we've gone through a period of time here. We've been notified of the positive, but now we need to gather the information, and we have to be able to talk to all of these people. Now, if you think about it, I don't know if you all have ever had a positive test or had a test, but when you get your results, it's usually four o'clock in the act, on a Friday afternoon is what I find. But usually, you know, it's in the afternoon. It kind of shows up in your email. And that could be at any time, depending on what you got, when you received your test. So maybe Saturday morning. So we're, we do get calls. The school nurses are getting calls at all times, and they, and I've just been so proud of what they've been doing because they just get right on it because they know how important this is. So once they've determined the risk, they've gotten all the information, then they will, there are several avenues. It's kind of a circular motion, as you can see here. They may consult with an epidemiologist. We've been consulting with epidemiologists all along. Some cases are very straightforward. We know that, okay, somebody didn't have a mask. They were close together. That would be someone we'd ask to quarantine. But some aren't always as straightforward, and we have to do a little bit more investigation, and we really want to talk to the epidemiologist and consult with them. And then I ask the nurses as well to, they do prepare a report, and then they will discuss it, they will discuss it with me as a COVID coordinator as well, just to make sure that we've got all the bases covered and that we're keeping everybody safe. So, but, but there is also sometimes a lag time between the time that we're able to get to an epidemiologist. So we do have a liaison with the Division of Public Health that we're in communication with regularly. And in addition to that, the nurses, and I do it more so just because of my position, but three to four days a week, we have meetings, an hourly meeting with the Department of Education and the Division of Public Health, just to discuss the cases that we're seeing and what we're getting and how we're handling the cases. So there we're all making sure that we're doing the best thing for our, for our students and for our staff. So once we've identified who needs to quarantine, that is, that they may be at most risk for developing COVID, then we will call, the nurse or the administrator will call the folks who may be a close contact. So parents may get a call or staff members may get a call. And if you've ever gotten a call, something like this, it's a little distressing. It can be a little upsetting. So the nurses try to provide some information. If you want to go to the next slide. We want to be able to give them, you know, the information that they need and what they need to do, what might happen, when they might develop symptoms, when they should test. So the nurses provide that information, and then they should, they follow up with a letter to let people know what it means to quarantine. And of course, back to our positive case as well, we will send them a letter of what we expect in isolation. And then, once that's done, once we've notified those people that, that we have determined that are at higher risk, then the administrator then will, will then notify the staff and the families that we've had a positive case in the school and that they are deemed low risk because we've done our investigation. I'm going to go to the next, the next slide. Couple of things that I just wanted to point out to you. And before I get there, that, that is essentially contact tracing, but I do want to really stress that it does, it takes a little bit of time throughout the day to make all the calls and the evening to, and to get that information out. But we want to make sure that everybody's safe, so we do it, do it well, and the nurses have done a remarkable job. And I want to point out to you, this district guide that the school nurse has also developed, and particularly a shout out to Jackie Kimball at Tally and Michelle Scott, who was one of our float nurses, but mostly she's at Mount Pleasant High School, and Michelle Lawson at P.S. Dupont, who helped put this together. I hope that we provided a copy for all of you on the board, and it is available on the district website, just to tell everyone about our process and what, how we operate in, within the school setting. The other thing that, that nurses have been doing have really, have tried to be available and, and provide education to our teachers to make sure that they are have the personal protective equipment that they need, depending on their job responsibilities. And even, you know, even it's different once you get into the setting and you start doing it. So they will follow up with you and just make sure that you have what you need. So they will be more than happy to provide any kind of presentation if you would like that for your classroom or for your staff. And so I just really can't say enough about the dedication and commitment of the, the school nurses in the Brandywine School District. They've really just gone above and beyond to really make sure that the staff is, and students are safe in our schools.
So I'll take over here, but part of this compliment is yours. So I do have to second that notion around the dedication and commitment of our nurses. The fact that they're doing this work and we're not waiting for the Department of Public Health. Other districts chose to do it that way. They chose to kind of let the process run through the Department of Public Health, and, and they continue to have long waiting times. We, we chose not to do that. Beth chose not to do that under our superintendent's leadership. And our nurses have been extremely dedicated, after hours, weekends, making sure that people get timely notification. There's timely information coming around close contacts. They've really been on top of this. And our goal was to be open, transparent, and honest the whole time about all of this, and they've done just a spectacular job. You want to talk about record-keeping, record-keeping, Beth has done a tremendous job with all of our 19 nurses with record-keeping. We've got our numbers completely down pat and in line and can get them to you at any time. And then just the general connection that she has and that our other nurses have with the health and medical field. Many of our nurses are doing double duty. They are working in that health and medical field outside of school hours. And so I'll just end with this little nugget of information that I thought you might find useful. We have nurses, 19 nurses across 16 excellent schools and programs. From 42 years of service to six years of service, we have a combined 457 years of experience, knowledge, and service just for BSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lawson, and thank you, Ms. Mattie. I know the time and effort that it takes you and your team to facilitate this process and everything I've seen, heard, and read, and what you've shown tonight. You know, your diligence is helping us to outperform the state and DPH, and it's greatly appreciated by myself, rest of the board as well, I'm sure, and our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Mattie, can you just clarify for me, the 15 minutes of time? Is that the time over a 24-hour period that you're within a six-feet distance of the individual who's positive, not six, 15 minutes of time that you're in a classroom?
No, you're absolutely right. It's 15 minutes with, within six, six feet of a child. And you know, our teachers, and especially with our young ones, they, they need to get close to those children for that, to help them. So yes, we, that's what we look at, is the 15 minutes of time. It is not, it's not, doesn't have to be continuous.
Mr. President. Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Numerous times over the past several months, I've, I've had the opportunity to sing the praises of our school nurses. And it's not just that we've nailed this contact tracing in the, in the past two months. This has been from the start of the pandemic. I've personally been on the phone with Beth Mattie on the weekend at midnight, at 6:00 AM, 24/7. Our school nurses are on top of this. I've read comments from several emails from staff members asking about the transparency of who has COVID and the need to know. And I have to fall back on exactly what Beth said in, in that presentation. We are going to do a thorough contact tracing, and we're not going to send an email to someone who we believe to be in close contact. That individual is going to get a personal phone call so that if a staff member gets an email that there has been a COVID case, whether that's from a student or a staff member in a building, they can tape a sigh, a big, deep sigh, knowing that they are not at risk. If there's any chance that that staff member is at risk because of close contact, again, he or she will get a personal contact from either Beth Mattie or the school nurse. I also appreciate the fact that in every case where it's not clear-cut, Beth and the school nurse follow up with that epidemiologist. And there's been times when we've had conflicts of different points of view on who should be quarantined and who shouldn't. And in every case, the, the phrase "out of an abundance of caution" comes in, and we follow the epidemiologist's recommendations for quarantining and isolation. And again, I just have to applaud our building nurses. You might think, well, with all that going on, Brandywine's stats must be way down in terms of teachers being quarantined and isolated because we're jumping all over it. Now, if anything, it might even cause those numbers to be higher than other districts. Because again, out of an abundance of caution, we're gonna, we're gonna keep people safe to the best of our ability. And, and that starts with our nurses and the thoroughness of that investigation. So again, Beth, on behalf of the district, thank you, and thank that entire team for the outstanding job they do every single day, day in, day out, night and day. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. And I believe several are on the, on the, at the board meeting tonight, so I know they appreciate your, your words. Thank you.
Now, I'll just keep it with you, Superintendent Holer, for your monthly report and general district news.
Well, good evening, board members, staff, families watching online. As planned, our students in grades PK through 5th grade returned to hybrid learning on Monday, January 11th, and our secondary hybrid students in grades 6 through 12 started last Tuesday, January 19th. Hopefully, if you were able to join the Zoom link earlier, you got to see some of the pictures of students coming back into the classrooms as well as some wonderful comments that we've received from parents and staff members and students. Want to take a minute and just talk through hybrid learning. I think to most people, going and thinking about hybrid learning doesn't sound like that much of a remarkable accomplishment or feat. But let's put that in context for just a minute. I thought long and hard about what would be a good analogy, and the only thing I could think of was back when my daughter was playing soccer, in Little League soccer, and it was our turn to have the team over for a slumber party, and how exhausting it was to try to manage not just your own two children, but 14 other students at the same time.
Students at the same time in different locations and different areas. But even that analogy, I think falls far short. Our teachers have done an amazing job at transforming, moving from. A very comfortable, traditional approach that they excel at into something that they had never experienced before. Just because you are an excellent traditional classroom teacher, doesn't mean that you're going to be able to pick up and carry the ball. In a full remote learning environment. If you're a great full remote teacher, doesn't mean you're going to be exceptional at a hybrid approach. But our teachers have shown the flexibility, the resiliency to get the job done and make it happen. So you can imagine, look at that picture there. I believe that's Lancashire Elementary. Not only is the teacher keeping an eye on the students in the classroom in front of her, but also maintaining contact. And instructing probably fifteen students remotely at the same time. Very, very difficult. And all teachers are facing similar challenges across the US. But I have heard numerous parents have, have expressed their gratitude. On how well not only the remote learning has gone, but also the thrill of their children coming back. After experiencing the hybrid learning the last few days. So from the bottom of my heart, sincerely, I, I appreciate. The commitment, dedication and flexibility that our teachers continue to show. In meeting the needs of our students. Some students excel at remote learning and some students excel at the hybrid. They're meeting the needs of both those groups of students. Share some data around our hybrid learning. What you see is each school listed, I'm not going to go through them each. But the, the student column represents the number of students that are currently signed up for hybrid instruction. And attending right now. And then the percent column is what percent is that number of students to the entire student body? So there at Carcroft, you can see a hundred and thirty-two students. That represents thirty percent of their student body. Note at the bottom that we have opened the window for parents to choose. Now that second semester or first semester is over, we told all of our parents earlier. That once second semester came, if they desire to change their original preference and move to remote or from remote to hybrid. That we would allow them to do that. So we are in the process of doing that now. We have approximately two hundred and twenty applicants. And we have to vet those applicants against the need for transportation. Again, we have limited capacity on the buses. But also what's the current capacity in the classrooms? And we've established those numbers based on square footage of classroom. And that includes the use of six feet of social distancing versus the state recommended three feet. So those numbers will change. We are going to close the window for parents to request hybrid this Wednesday. That'll give us enough time to finish processing those applications. Make some phone calls, adjust bus routes, that type of thing. We'll then take a look at second marking period grades. Identify some students that we believe could benefit from in-school hybrid instruction. That are currently full remote. We'll reach out to some of those parents to see if they're interested. Of course. Some have decided not to engage in any hybrid learning at all this year and want to stay full remote. We'll respect that. And we will continue to take a look at available space as additional parents. Express an interest in remote after those. The closing of the window Wednesday and taking a look at the students who are academically in need. Questions been raised, are, are students deciding not to stay in hybrid? Once they've experienced it. Actually, uh, this is the enrollment from last week. Of course, uh, January nineteenth was just. The first day for secondary. They only had one day. Because Monday, the eighteenth was Dr. Martin Luther King Day, no school. But you can see we've got some outstanding enrollment rates. So we're not seeing much. Decline in terms of students who signed up for hybrid reversing and asking to go back full remote. We have had some, but the, the attendance pattern there looks fairly solid and consistent with what we might see. If not, it's a little better than what we might see during a typical school year. Other questions been asked. We had to change the schedule once we started to go into the hybrid mode. And that was based on transportation. So in order to get the elementary transportation synchronized with the high school and middle. We had to scale back some instructional hours, especially at the high school level. And questions have been asked. In fact, there were some people in the audience tonight who were raising questions. Previously about the number of instructional hours that are going to be lost. So we, we know that some instructional time is going to be lost at the beginning of this year when our first original schedules were developed. And put out. Assistant Superintendent Cora Scott did an exceptional job and maximized instructional time to the point where we were. Well, above our sister districts in total instructional time. So carving away the time that we needed didn't have as much of an impact as it could have. And puts us right in line with our sister districts in Newcastle County, as you can see in this chart. I referenced a minute ago. That a hybrid teacher, great hybrid teacher doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be a great full remote teacher. And a great traditional in the classroom teacher doesn't mean you're going to be a, a, a great full remote teacher. This ties into something that's been in the news. You may have seen over the weekend that there is a bill at the. State legislators right now, Senate Bill forty-two, which calls for a pause in the D pass two. Formal observation and evaluation of our teaching staff. I went on record three months ago stating my concerns with moving forward with D pass two. For the very reasons we just stated. Teachers did an exceptional job of making that transition back in the fall. You remember the board voted to extend in service days to provide that additional professional development. But that was just the beginning. We can't expect that a few days of pre-school year in service. On remote teaching is going to make master teachers in remote teaching. At the same time, the evaluators who will be going in are principals and assistant principals. They haven't received adequate professional development in order to evaluate what a good remote learning. Lesson looks like. What are the look fours and asks abouts? So to me, I, I fully support the, the passage of that bill to put a pause on. I would also love to see a pause in terms of component five in the state testing. I know that there's discussion at the federal level to do so. And I just want the board to be aware of my continued position around D pass two. For this school year due to the. Situation we find ourselves in and what's been cast upon our teachers. And the hopeful pause in terms of smarter balance and other related. Component five measures of assessment. Also need to talk through the change in guidance from the state. So prior to. The holidays. We at this meeting and. Every day in between, following data and comparing it back to the established benchmarks. That the Department of Education originally published back in July. They were published in July, so my guess is they were probably developed in June. Not much was known. This is the, the defense of the Department of Education at this point. At that time, those benchmarks made sense. Since that time. They have. The research has shown that those benchmarks may not have been as accurate as they needed to be. Hence the state's decision to move away from those thresholds. Now they're still reporting the same data. But if you've gone on their website, they no longer are categorizing whether that's a stage green, yellow or red. And prior to, again, the holidays, those numbers were triple red, which indicated a return to remote. Instruction. The state has changed that stance. They are not publishing any benchmarks or thresholds. And instead are relying on districts to monitor the data, close. Classrooms, grade levels and buildings in some cases based on data. And I believe that we've stated before that we're going to continue to frequently monitor, check data. Make decision based. Decisions around whether we remain in hybrid or move to a remote. And I want to assure the board and those parents and staff that are watching tonight, that has not changed. We continue to faithfully, daily follow this data, look at trends. Look at national reports and I'll walk through just a few of those with you now. But first, I forgot to change the order. Some questions that I know are lingering in the minds of teachers and parents, right? Is there a set number? How many positive cases are needed to close a school for hybrid instruction? Answer is there is no set number. It is all dependent upon the size of the school. The number of staff in the school, the number of students, how many staff, how many students are positive, how many are quarantining? There's no set flowchart. There are so many variables that we need to look at before such a decision is made. Can a school be partially closed to hybrid instruction? Answer to that is yes, and that's actually what is encouraged by the Department of Education. But again, it's dependent on exactly what's happening in that school. If it's an isolated case, it could be just students, a few students or staff that are asked to quarantine. But already this week, we've had to quarantine entire classes. And in one building, I think it may have been an entire grade level that we did have to quarantine. Not because the students were positive, but because. We had a positive staff member who interacted with. Four different classes, I believe. So that is the process that we will continue to follow. It may be that we have to enclose a, a specific school, maybe not even because of what's happening in the school. But what's happening in a particular zip code or neighborhood or community. So all those pieces come into play. And again, we have to do our due diligence in monitoring the data. Are there established benchmarks? Well, I kind of referenced that a minute ago and. Maybe I jumped into the slide a little bit too early. But the state did away with those benchmarks. We do have other states that have benchmarks and even. Today learned that Maryland might be moving away slightly from their benchmarks that they've had established and. Opening the doors more readily for students to return. Don't know that for sure, but that's kind of what was implied. So we will continue. And I can't stress this enough to monitor that data. To see where we stand nationally, regionally and locally. And have to make those decisions moving forward. We're in constant contact, as Beth Mattie said, with the Department of Public Health. Not only her and the nurses, but superintendents have weekly meetings. We're invited to the health conferences. Where we've got a liaison that we can run everything past and. I'm not an epidemiologist and I can't pretend I am. So we will defer in all cases to the epidemiologist. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we will follow their recommendations in terms of staying open if. We determine that we believe conditions exist that warrant us going back to full remote. Sorry, that was a little cluttered there, but I wanted to be careful in how I said that. Again, we will respect all decisions of the Department of Public Health in terms of them closing us down. But at the same time, we have latitude and I'm getting into the next slide. The department has given us and the state has given us latitude to make that decision. Even though unilaterally, the Department of Public Health and the governor, as they previously have done. Can decide to close all the schools or one school or section of schools within the Brandywine School District. Will the administration of the vaccine to school employees allow the district to continue hybrid instruction despite local outbreaks? That sounds like it should, but actually I, I don't believe that. Our employees being vaccinated would necessarily guarantee. That we would not at some point have to return to full remote instruction. Even if all of our staff were vaccinated, depending on what the community spread is. And depending on what the. We're all watching the new COVID variant B one-one-seven. Depending on what happens with it. Despite whether staff have been vaccinated or not. We've got to make sure our parents and community understand that there's still the possibility that we could return to remote instruction. Then there's the question on what about the vaccine? Well, all state employees got an email last week that. Notifying us that tomorrow, we're going to get an email from the Department of Public Health and DOE. Regarding a sign up for us to get vaccinated. While I'm excited about that opportunity, I'm also a realist. And publish some stats there that I find pretty amazing. I could not find the, the percentage of fully vaccinated. Persons in the state of Delaware, but I did find it for Maryland, New Jersey and Pennsylvania. And all the data in the PowerPoint tonight is data that was pulled yesterday. So it's twenty-four hours old. So you can see Maryland, New Jersey and Pennsylvania. We've heard great things about how the process is rolling in those states. They all have less than one percent of their population vaccinated. So we are scheduled to be underway with the vaccination. We were told towards the end of January. It's now looking more like the beginning of February. And we'll have to see how that continues in terms of coordination and availability of dosages. So just a quick flash through, I want to show you kind of again, a sample of the data that we're looking at. Always looking at the new cases per hundred thousand. There's two different sources. This is the fourteen day trend. Johns Hopkins has a nice seven day trend as well. And you can see where Delaware stands. Arizona had the highest rate. Delaware came in at twelfth right now. Something we were definitely keeping an eye on, but we're seeing the numbers steadily decline over the course of the. Something we were definitely keeping an eye on, but we're seeing the numbers steadily decline over the course of the past several days. And that kind of coincides with the peak that we expected immediately after the Christmas and winter holiday break. Maryland 34th, New Jersey 15th, Pennsylvania 29th, and the state of Hawaii at 50th. So vacation plans can be made. Percent positive, again, it's critical to make sure you're looking at what data in terms of seven-day, 14-day trend. And you can see Delaware is pretty much right smack in the middle of of the nation at 13% for a 14-day trend. It was 15% a week ago, so we've started to come down. We continue to come down. So South Carolina up there at 27%, double where we are. Maine, several months ago, you might remember that Maine was one of the highest percent positive states. So some good news there in Maine. We've often referred to the R-not value, and that's that coefficient of reproduction that kind of says how the virus is spreading. A coefficient of one says that on average, each COVID-positive individual infects one other individual. Anything over one shows that the virus is spreading. The higher the number, the more significant the spread. Anything less than one shows that the virus is starting to slow and not spread as rapidly. So very pleased that our R-not value yesterday was 0.97. Mr. Ackerman told me today that it was up to 1.0 as he tracks it every day. Put that in comparison, this is a slide that I took directly from the November 16th superintendent's report, and it just disappeared for some reason. Let's back that up. And you can see the R-not value for Delaware was at 1.25 back on November 16th. Significant difference. Take a look at our comparison around our neighboring counties. To do that, I take, definitely take a look at the three in Delaware. And because we're pretty close to Cecil, I take a look at it. Kent, we're really not too close to, but let's see, next closest Maryland County. New Jersey, I look at the three right across the bridge, and then Pennsylvania, the four to our immediate north that we're kind of close to. And you can kind of see that Newcastle County, definitely the best of the three counties at this point in Delaware. Those numbers have dropped since last week. Still not as good as Cecil County, but in comparison, right there with New Jersey and and definitely higher than what we're seeing in Pennsylvania. But we're trending in the right direction. Take a look at percent positivity for the past week and the past month. Kind of tells you where we are. And there's some pretty staggering numbers there when you get to Pennsylvania. Those are not incorrect. Actually, Pennsylvania's positivity rate two weeks ago was in the 40%. So significant difference. And again, this is based on per 100,000, so that's an equal basis. It doesn't really matter if Delaware has a smaller population than Pennsylvania. Also, take a look at Delaware zip codes. Not easy, because you have to go onto that little map the state supplies and try to find every single one of these. So to the best of my knowledge, there are 46 zip codes that I keep looking at. And I continuously put them in order, rank them, and just kind of see where we fall out. And you can see our zip codes I highlighted in blue. Our highest zip code is 29th out of 46. Our other zip codes are 33, 35, 38, 40, 42. So we are definitely towards the bottom half, bottom quartile of the zip codes in the state. It's a sample of the data. That's not all of the data. I also track hospitalizations, number of available beds, number of ICU beds, number of beds occupied due to COVID. Again, that helps us see what kind of response our state is able to offer should there be a quick spike. And I will say it again, I I am constantly looking at that COVID variant B117. I think we have to keep a very close track on that. It's been identified in our neighboring states. There has not been a case yet identified in Delaware, but it is a matter of time. The CDC, for the first time, came out either late Friday or over the weekend with its first that I've seen cautionary bulletin around that variant. Written positive that in a positive mindset, saying that hopefully the vaccination will help curb the spread of that variant. But if I read between the lines, there is concern of possible spread right around mid-March. And that should ring a bell, because it would be mid-March last year when all this started and we first tossed into remote learning. So we're going to keep an eye, a very close eye on that. We'll include information in the Friday package to the boards to keep you up to speed. And we will be consulting health officials on the status of our reaction and planning for the spread of that B117 variant. And before I leave the data piece, I just have a plea. We sent out a message to our parents last night, asking them if they have children that they're sending into our buildings to please ensure, and I reiterate that tonight, do the health screening with your son or your daughter before they walk out the door. And if you have any inkling of your child not feeling well, keep them home. COVID symptoms that have been listed by the CDC, by DPH, are very similar to regular health issues the kids might have during the course of the year. Don't risk it. Play it safe. Keep your child home, contact your school nurse, and let's make sure that it's not COVID before you send him or her into school. We ask all state staff members are required to take a health screening prior to the start of the day. We can't require that for students, but we strongly, strongly, strongly urge our parents to do it. So thank you for your support, parents, in making that happen. And wrapping up here, just a proud moment from BSD, I want to recognize the outstanding efforts of our three high schools. Concord High School has been named a national semifinalist in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM Award, one of 75 high schools in the nation. And the beauty of this award is that it focuses on the science, math, engineering, and technology skills of our students, putting them to use in the service of other people. So it's really an empathy-based project and program. And what better use of your talents and abilities than to serve others? So I applaud not only Concord High School, but Mount Pleasant High and Brandywine High, too, because they are involved in the same projects. They're actually helping a school who services special needs students in a sister district, designing adaptive devices to allow them to play sports like their typical peers. And the joy and enthusiasm that they're getting from that experience just just can't be matched. And to see it rewarded as a finalist in a national competition, we have much to be proud of with our students and our staff. And finally, I'm going to ask you to mark your calendars for January 30th. And I'm going to implore the board and everyone in attendance tonight. There'll be an email going out to all staff. The the climate in our nation, we're at odds with one another. And the tension is real. I think we we can all point to examples in our lives. And the reason January 30th is important is because it's National Thank Your Mentor Day. And I'm going to encourage everybody. Each of us has someone in our lives, either professional lives or personal lives, who's made a difference. Who's taken us under our wings, guided us, supported us, taught us, taught us when we didn't even know we were being taught. And you know who that individual is. Let's let's take an opportunity and say thank you. So I'm going to do that tonight. Thank your mentor. And that I will. So Ms. Anita Thorpe, if you're watching, and I have a strong feeling you are, because I connived with your son, who is assistant principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary, to concoct something to get you onto the Zoom this evening, I want to say thank you, Anita. Thank you for, oops, for being just who you were. You were the consummate professional. You pursued excellence in every facet of education possible. And you did it without ego. You did it in humility and in service to others. I, I'm sure, am joined by a slew of other staff members that have been privileged to work under your tutelage, who would also point to you and say, thank you, Anita. Yes, a national distinguished principal who guided Mount Pleasant Elementary, who guided David W. Harlan Elementary School, whose talents and abilities were often tapped at the district level, often invited to come to the district level. And her response was always, nope. I know where I need to be, and I need to be with my kids. And that picture says it all. Those are fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who love their principal, and there's a reason why. And it comes down to she was passionate about kids. And that's what makes Anita Thorpe the person who she is and my mentor. So Anita, thank you for everything you've done for me, and it looks like you have continued your love of children as we knew you would. She's still active out in the community. Every time you see her, she's helping others. No better gift could I have received than to work as her assistant principal for many years and to model, I hope, some of the things that she exemplifies, which is the best of everything. Thank you, Anita. And I encourage all of you to take just a few minutes and make a phone call, send an email. Let your mentor know that they mean the world to you. And that, Mr. President, is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Holor. Gosh, after that glowing endorsement of Ms. Thorpe, I hate to go back to statistics, but can you go back to the earlier slide on the attendance numbers? It was like the third or fourth slide, maybe?
Well,
maybe you can answer the question without the slide. So in the elementary numbers, did, are the numbers consistent from pre-holiday to post-holiday attendance numbers?
No, sir. Those were just the three days last week. You mean in the first couple of slides?
But I guess when we first rolled into hybrid back in October, you know, were, did we have higher attendance than we have now? We had survey numbers, but then did that change from actual attendance numbers?
I don't have those numbers with me. Remember, we had a phased-in approach back in October where we started with special programs, our media students. Two or three weeks ago, we pulled data to see if we had students who had previously signed up for hybrid backing out. And while we had some, we had more students who were asking to come back into hybrid. So the data I showed was just those students currently enrolled in hybrid, not the ones that are scheduled to start February 1st, starting the third marking period.
Okay.
Okay. I think at least my my question is, I recall when we first did the surveys, it was about 50/50 hybrid versus remote, but it looks like we're closer to 30% across the buildings versus 50%.
Right. So we didn't know what we would expect to see when we opened the window back up for third marking period. We are going to be pushed if every person who said originally they wanted hybrid instruction signs up for it. Because again, remember, our buses at elementary level are literally one-third of the capacity that they were able to carry kids last year. So in some cases, parents might ask to do hybrid, and they need transportation, and we're going to simply have to say, I'm sorry, we can't provide it. We we are maxed out in terms of buses and seats. We also are going to keep a very close eye on available seats in the classroom. We held tight to the six feet of social distancing in the classroom. We know the square footage of each classroom and what the capacity is in terms of number of students that can be in that classroom. And we've said that we won't exceed that number. So if all 50% of those parents wanted to come back to hybrid, we would not be able to accommodate all of those requests. We've kind of pointed that out earlier. I want to say back in in September, October, when we first put out our plan and ran through the the survey numbers and what it allowed us to do and what the limitations were.
But the demand is still there.
Well, yes, we see we've gotten about 200 requests, and we'll have more available seats past that. But again, we're going to reach out to some of those other individuals that haven't come forward, but we'll still continue to entertain requests from parents until capacity says that we just can't do it.
Can you clarify what the capacity is? I certainly was under the impression that we would be able to accommodate 50% of our students or 50% of those who who expressed interest in in adopting the hybrid model. And so it sounds like that instead of 50%, we're definitely closer to the 30%.
Reverend Perry, the 50% was always, here's what the request is from our our parents. And based on actual square footage of the classroom, it's such a variation. We've got classrooms, some of the classrooms at Maple Lane, our kindergarten room there is, has 1,400 square feet versus a middle school classroom at P.S. de Pont might be 675 square feet. So the actual number of students on, in any given classroom varies greatly. And it's based, again, on six feet of social distancing. All depends on how those numbers pan out to see how close we'll be to 50%. Maybe it's it's 40% of our families that requested and were able to accommodate. But just mathematically, things would have to to pan out just right if if it was 50% that we could things would have to to pan out just right if if it was fifty percent that we could accommodate. We've always said right along that there was no way we could accommodate close to the number of bus students that we had last year. So we knew from the get-go that that was going to be problematic. It helps that we are two cohorts instead of every day. That does allow us to bring more kids in for partial hybrid versus five days a week with a single group.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, there was discussion. I guess back in the August timeframe. Now, a plan to bring students in who for things like labs, either for science classes or engineering. Where's the progress in that? So for specific purposes like that?
I can't can't tell you if that's happened yet. Again, most of that was going to happen at the secondary level. I think maybe now that, you know, secondary students are back in, staff got a feel for for what it's like to have kids in the building, that that might start to happen on those Wednesdays in some of those open times. We can follow back up and and give you an update on that at the next board meeting.
Is that there would also be transportation needs?
Correct. That transportation wouldn't be the regular bus route that's provided. I don't believe during the course of the week, but it might be more of a bus hub type situation. So the students might have to walk a little bit further to catch the bus, similar to our activity bus runs.
Anything else from the board? Questions, comments?
Just one comment. You know, I I gotta say, I I have to agree with our staff that are concerned about their health in that we're we're servicing a very, a much smaller percentage of the total student body than I thought we were initially. I'm glad that school personnel are in one B. I I really wish we could have everybody vaccinated tomorrow. And I just, I'm just questioning the logic at this point from a state perspective, not not even so much the the Brandywine School District. But from a state perspective, when you look at Newcastle County being a little bit better COVID-wise than our lower counties. That we're not just going to stay remote until we get our staff vaccinated. And and you know, get the two shots or hopefully that third company comes through and you can have one shot. But I I'm just wondering if it's worth the risk to our staff for such a small percentage of our student cohorts in the short term. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there at this point. That question is not for me to decide today or not for me to vote on tonight because it's not on the agenda, but you know, I I just, you know, want to put that out there that it concerns me that based on the number of kids that we're servicing. And okay, yes, that people say, oh, schools are not a major spreader. And okay, I can, let's let's grant that for a moment. But common sense tells you if a child comes in with a cold or the flu or the COVID. And they don't know they have it kind of thing. It it's going to spread. It's, I mean, that's just the way it's going to be. You know, you you say we had some buildings where because the staff member has been in, you know, more than one classroom. They've, you know, shut down seven different teachers. And and and, you know, numerous students. So I I think just based on the numbers, I'm I'm questioning whether the risk is worth the reward for what we're doing. So again, it's you're you're not asking the board to make that decision tonight. But, you know, I'm just expressing my opinion. I I think the teachers have a point, especially with vaccination around the corner. For school personnel, and that's our bus drivers, that's our custodians, that's our food service people. You know, everybody who, you know, works in the school setting, and even board members are included in that group, though I personally will get a vaccine till every staff member has had theirs. But, you know, it just kind of defies common sense to think that it's not going to possibly spread in schools at this point. And the numbers just to me don't justify what we're doing. But, you know, again, that's just based on what you presented here tonight.
Right. And and I think some of those testimonials that you'll get from parents who have their children in hybrid now. It 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 is extremely important to to some of our children.
I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, how to comment?
So as many of you know, I'm a primary care physician in North Wilmington. I've been reading about COVID on a daily basis since March of twenty twenty, and I've attended numerous medical meetings on COVID and also from the Delaware Department of Public Health. I've been following the data and the science closely. At the beginning of the pandemic, I recommended remote learning as the virus was so new and unknown and there was no data. I again recommend remote at the beginning of the school year as there was real no doubt about school transmission at that time. And I also wanted to see how the process went for the private schools who have been open since the beginning of the year. And now we have the data compiled by the Delaware Public Health that tells us that the transmission of COVID nineteen in a school setting is quite low. And that it is safe for schools to return to in-person instruction. We also have data coming out on mental health told that this pandemic is causing our children. There was an article yesterday in the New York Times, which was discussing a district in Nevada. Since March, there was over three thousand alerts to district officials raising alarms about suicidal thoughts, possible harm, and cries for help. By December of this year, there was eighteen students that have taken their own lives. Eighteen students in one district. I've heard from numerous families in the district that have reached out to me to let me know that their students are not doing well and that they're really struggling online. Even despite the fact that we have thirty percent, possibly around that range of people coming back, I feel like those thirty percent are the kids that really need this help more than anyone. And we cannot let things like this happen in our district. I have been very proud of the way the district has followed the guidelines to make our schools safe. We have kids in the building at the elementary level since October that have not had school transmissions in the building where we needed to close down schools. I want to thank our amazing teachers for all the hard work and dedication that they have shown since last March. From quickly learning how to teach remote to mastering it by the beginning of this new year. And now to navigating the in-person and the remote teaching. You've all done an outstanding job. And I truly appreciate everything that you've done for your students. I also want to remind everyone as well that we are all on the same team, the board, the district, the teachers, the staff, and the BSD families. We all want the same thing. We want to give our children a great education. Our current situation is a very difficult one and no solution will make everyone happy. We are trying our best to continue to educate our students as best we can while also keeping everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zare.
I um, I want to. I would, I would like to know. I'm being told that there is that the quality of instruction has diminished. There has been discrepancies around the actual in-person instruction time. Parents have reached out and have expressed that their child is in fact getting closer to four hours of instruction time versus the six. And so piggybacking off of what's already been said regarding doing what's in the best interest of our students, our families, and our educators. Is it really, if if our students are getting two to three hours less than what they would in a strictly remote learning setting? Are we really doing what's in the best interest of our students? And piggybacking off of Ralph sentiments as far as the well-being and safety of of our teachers. And so I guess my my question is, is there accountability and do we really know that that our students are getting six plus hours of instruction time? And it's not just one family. I'm sure we've received numerous emails. I personally know of two families in particular. I'm sure you all have received emails as well concerning the lack of or the lack of quality of instruction time. So yes, we all, we all, each of us can have an opinion on it, but ultimately, we want to do what's in the best interest. We can all read statistics. No, no one here is a COVID expert. And so for every statistic we can find for it, I can find one against it. So medical professional or otherwise. And so I think that ultimately, we want to determine what is in the best interest of our students. And of course, in doing that, we have to consider our personnel.
Respectfully, Reverend Perry, if you can find statistics that are different than what I showed from yesterday around national, regional, and local spread, I'd be more than happy to take a look at them. We've said from the get-go that we will be data-driven. So please do share any sources of data that you think are appropriate, and I will definitely take a look at them and dig into them.
Okay.
And and I know, you know, this, we've said it time and time again, this is has become a divisive issue and there's statistics and articles on both sides of the argument. I had the opportunity to talk with some of our teachers tonight and listen to their concerns and we've, you know, as a board and a district, we've received emails, you know, of those concerns and 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 we're listening. And I just, you know, my question I keep coming back to is I think we can all agree this virus is here to stay for quite some time in the foreseeable future. So if if we don't make the efforts to put a plan in how to deal with this, we, I I don't see how we can keep waiting for tomorrow that may never come. If it gets better, when it gets better, we don't know when that is. So we have to make plans. And in the presentation that we saw tonight, database decisions, science-based decisions, you know, planning to make it as safe as an environment that we can. We have to somehow move forward. And I think this district certainly, in in my memory, you know, we've never discounted the needs of of any minority group. So even if the number is, you know, fifty percent or thirty percent, there is a need there. Like Dr. Zarek said, there are children who are suffering who the emotional and mental complexities that this remote learning has has caused. And I understand you can say that on the teacher's end as well. And and, you know, they're all valid concerns on on both sides of the issue, but I just think from a planning perspective and the, you know, the safety protocols and the contact tracing that we've done, that we're doing. I think we're doing it like has been shown better than our sister district, better than our neighboring districts, better than the state. And it takes a community to do it. I mean, we have to be diligent with our our coworkers, with our administration, building, teachers. You know, families that want to have their their students and need their students to be in. You have to be diligent to, you know, keep your child at home one day if they're coughing funny, sneezing, showing any kind of symptoms. We all have to work together to try to find a path forward. And, you know, this is our first week back for secondary. You know, and it's going to be growing pains. There's going to be bumps. You gotta figure it out. But just like the elementary schools did last marking period or last last fall, you know, we do it. We modify, we adjust, we make the improvements that we need to. But I just, I just think we need to find a path forward and operate as if this is going to be here for a while. Because we've seen the vaccination rollout is slow, you know, contradictory studies on the efficacy of it, you know, supply issues. But we are, we're all in it together. I come from a, you know, strong union household, a, you know, education household. Shout out to my mom, by the way, who was my education mentor. But I I do, I mean, we hear you as a board. It's, you know, it's cliche. We keep saying over and over, these are hard decisions. Yeah, they are hard decisions. But we're all doing the best we can. And, you know, we've got to work together and we've got to support each other to do it, to get there for the students.
Yeah, I had some other things prepared, but most of you echoed what I was going to say, but I just want to share a part of a message that I received from a parent with three kids in the district today, because I think it highlights what Dr. Zarek said. And she said, it's so hard for me because I have so many teacher friends who I wholly respect and appreciate their positions against hybrid. And yet, at this point, I'm perfectly comfortable with it. My kids came home the first week of hybrid with a rekindled spirit. One they forgot that they had, and that had to do only with being around the energy of other people. Despite being physically distanced and masked, the energy and the smile in other people's eyes gave them a reason for actually appreciating school again. So I I think Reverend Perry said, you know, no one appears an infectious disease expert, and I don't think anybody in the room is tonight. And at the end of the day, the board is we're volunteer community members trying to do the best that we can for the largest number of people that we can. But I think what Mr. Holder said tonight, in our case, we have a superintendent who's regularly in communication with actual infectious disease experts and health experts to help guide our decisions as a district. And out of this panel, with the exception of maybe Dr. Zarek, I think our superintendent is by far the most informed and the most frequently informed by experts on the safety of having students and staff in our buildings. And it sounds to me like at this point, the experts continue to report that the best decision is for our students and families to be able to have that choice to be in school. I know we made that choice for our kids and I I think the difference I've seen in them personally in this past week since they've been in school is very different than it's been in the past six months. I was just, you know, I was, I was talking just the other day that we're in a place now where our kids are locked in their rooms. Eight, ten, twelve, sixteen hours a day. A year ago, that would have been a huge red flag. And uh, and now we've created that environment for them. So I think for a lot of families like ours, the choice for our kids is that they need to be in school, and I think families need to be able to have that choice.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Kristen.
Okay. I I just want to say, I think Jason touched on a few of the issues that I have also been thinking about. But maybe from a different perspective. Because I'm really grateful that my family has a choice to remain remote, but I, it makes me I really want to be able as a board member to have our teachers also have that choice. And I don't know if, I understand that there's, you know, union rules and and HR rules and guidance and guidelines and how we can make that possible. But I'd like to ask the district administration that if we can come together with the union to see where we can find some middle ground to work with the union so that our teachers who desperately want to be remote for their own health reasons have some accommodations made so that they can continue to do that. And, you know, I don't know if it's even possible. But I'd like to offer to help in kind of providing that relationship and supporting the relationship between the district and the union. If it's a, if it's a all possible, I'd I'd like to to be able to be a a partner with in that work.
Thank you, Kristen. And with that, we will move on to public comment. Before we do, though, I want to take a moment to apologize to anyone who submitted an email through our website. There was a link that went to publiccomment@bsd.k12.de.us. So anyone that submitted through that and did not get a response. We initially set this up to alleviate some of the volume at the monthly meeting and provide our community an opportunity to share their opinion. That, you know, when there are common themes, these emails could be, you know, kind of collected and the superintendent could incorporate that into the monthly report and answer those questions. And, you know, unlike a regular meeting, it it wasn't clear to the sender that there would not be a reply, that this was just kind of submitted, and then they would kind of be all ideally answered in the superintendent's report. So there was some miscommunication on my part with the superintendent, and I want to apologize to anyone that did not get a response through that email. So I apologize. So now, just a friendly reminder that we limit speakers to three minutes each. This is your opportunity to be heard. While board members do not necessarily respond to public comment, they may have their own comments on the topic throughout the meeting. I think you just heard from Uh, I think you just heard from every board member on comments on current topics. Zoom microphones will cut off at the three minute mark. If you're here live at the three minute mark, we will thank you for your time. Just trying to be fair and consistent with everyone. So please do not take it personally. And with that, we are going to start with our Zoom public commenters. Ms. Harris, who do we have up first?
Deborah Jones.
Ms. Jones, you see the clock, the time is yours.
Hi, first of all, I want to thank all the board members who responded to my email. Um, I'd also like to say that I am well aware that there are very limited options that are good for everybody. I'm concerned that, um, one of the things that bothers me is that we keep saying that school, that, that it doesn't spread in schools when we don't test kids. We test them if they're symptomatic, but we also know that a lot of kids, the younger and younger people especially get COVID and they're asymptomatic. And I would also point out that on my way home from work today, before I got on the interstate, I passed several students in a group with no masks who were socializing together. That being said, I understand that a lot of students do follow protocols. But there are no good options here, there just aren't. Um, and, and I think one of the things that we have to do is teach kids to be resilient. This is not the first crisis or hardship that life is going to throw their way. And, you know, this is just where we are and we're making the best of it. And I am thrilled to be back doing something normal, just to get in the car and drive to work, to get dressed for work every day is feels normal in a way that I haven't been able to feel in a long time. However, with this hybrid schedule, um, as I pointed out in my email, when we moved from our rotating schedule to block schedule, our instructional time was reduced by 10%, yet we were still expected to cover the same amount of material. Under, when we first started the hybrid or the remote model in September, we had 165 minutes per week with the kids because they had that asynchronous day. Um, and that now they have a catch-up day and now that we're into hybrid model, we're down to 120 minutes per week. And there's been nothing said, we're still supposed to assess kids to give them six formative and three summative, and I just don't know how we can do it. And it doesn't seem like the expectations for teachers are changing, that we still have to, you know, there's pressure to cover this material. And I know the AP teachers are going crazy because the AP tests aren't being adjusted. So while this hybrid model, and, and I fully appreciate how much it benefits kids, I see it on their faces when they come into Concord. But that, the instructional time that we're losing is something that is falling on teachers and it, it concerns me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Wendy Turner.
Ms. Turner, when you see the clock, time is yours.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I wish to express my thanks for some changes and supports implemented since this fall to support teachers and advance social emotional learning. And in line with that, I practice, I will practice what I do with my students and in my home, I want to express some gratitude tonight. I came before the board in October to express concerns about the emotional health of teachers. And since that time, the elementary school schedule has been changed to include an asynchronous Wednesday. Doesn't require classroom teachers to post materials for students and a full midday break for both students and teachers. And this was a welcome change and I'm happy to report that my blood pressure has declined significantly. And my husband has shared that I'm a much more pleasant human being to be around. So in addition, the district now provides weekly resources to teachers to advance adult SEL and support mental health and wellness, including professional development opportunities with experts such as myself. So I want to thank you for listening. I truly appreciate being part of the work and I appreciate the district engaging educators with a staff SEL survey recently. And we look forward to understanding those results and moving forward with them in mind. I currently serve on the State Board of Education. And last week, Dr. Bunton gave a thorough update on hybrid learning challenges and the vaccine. I wrote to her after our meeting and I'm sharing my words to Dr. Bunton with you here tonight. She has okayed me sharing our exchange. I said, thank you so much for your thorough update last night. I would like to share my experiences going back to school. It has been very joyful to welcome students back to school. I teach seven and eight-year-olds and they do a great job wearing masks and social distancing. They so clearly want to be in school and to see them in person is restorative. On the ground, it's clear that every single human being who inhabits the school building is working extraordinarily hard to make things work. From custodians to support staff, to administrators, to nutrition staff and educators, we are all in it together and it shows and you can feel us in a positive way. Personally, I am getting better each day at the room and zoom model, which is a significant challenge. I have learned more this year than in years past, and I know that I'm modeling resilience and growth mindset to my students like never before during this challenge. So thank you for all that you're doing for Delaware students, families and school and district staff during this extraordinary time. It's greatly appreciated and I can't even begin to imagine how complex and difficult it all is. Dr. Bunting responded to my email by saying, Wendy, thanks for sharing your heartwarming return to school report. I appreciate your message and totally agree that we have to be models of resilience this year. I'll admit that I have had to resort to growth mindset and SEL techniques myself more often during this COVID experience than ever before. And your words appreciation, appreciation and encouragement are greatly appreciated. So I'm sharing this with all of you tonight because I'd like to express the same sentiments to all of you. So thank you. And I want to say right now that we are all at the crossroads of SEL as we live through this. Not just our students, but all of us. And part of my work as a teacher leader is to advocate. So I wish tonight to advocate for adult SEL at the system level in our district, embedded in in-service district and building level PLCs, as well as training for all employees. Thank you. Indeed, we are all in this together.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, and thank you for representing BSD on the state board.
Shawna Goodman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Um, I'm speaking tonight as a concerned parent and I have a child that attends at BSD Elementary School. Um, I'm looking, talking about the lack of communication and preparedness if and more likely when a teacher contracts COVID while trying to teach simultaneous, hybrid and remote learning. I experienced the issue firsthand with my child in class where the teacher got sick with COVID. And here are the two weeks that my third grader lived. 11:30, we got notification that our teacher was sick and would be out for the day. Hybrid, hybrid kids would be with the music teacher and everyone on their Chromebooks with teacher A. The message was sent via Dojo, which students don't have access to in their Chromebooks. So getting onto the Zoom was stressful. I emailed the principal who was posting the updates on Dojo to see if we could get the links into SchoolAG, but never got an answer. We eventually got by okay and assumed this would be the way the rest of the week went. 12:01, we got notification around 7:30 AM that the teacher would be out for the rest of the week via Dojo. And the hybrid class would have the gym teacher with them on Zoom and the Zoom would be with teacher B class. Basically the same thing, but a different teacher. Midday, we were told misinformation by the teacher B and we didn't know who to contact because no response from the principal. 12:03, we got notification again that my teacher would be with child, uh, teacher C and the link would be, be posted in SchoolAG where my child could access it. 12:04, my student, my student was with teacher D, yet another different teacher. 12:06, the teacher was cleared to return to school and posted that she would be back on Monday, 12:07. And 12:07, we got a message on Dojo stating that the teacher was still sick and would not be returning. I messaged the teacher to check on her at 8:00 AM when this was posted and she had no idea she wasn't returning. Department of Public Health released her back to school and the nurse overwrote it and didn't inform her. We were now back to teacher A covering the class, but when we got to the class, teacher A was ahead of what my daughter had been doing with teacher B, C and D. So now my child was confused and frustrated. 12:08, we were back to teacher B, who was two days behind teacher A. So now my child didn't sit and did nothing all day because she had already done it all the day before. Another super, super confusing day. We, at 12:10, at 9:30 AM, we got a Zoom link to start the day, which was supposed to start at 8:50 AM with teacher D. We got a message saying the gym teacher would check attendance the next day and they would be asynchronous for the rest of the day. These two weeks for my student were a whirlwind of confusion and stress. We had fights over what she was supposed to be doing or not doing because of the teachers being on different lessons. We argued over which Zoom she was supposed to be on. A severe lack of communication and I can only assume that these were not the proper protocols for a teacher to be out with COVID. And if they are, I would beg you to avoid other families frustrations, to have a better, more stable and well-communicated Plan B. Because having kids back in school with these numbers is only going to lead to more possible cases. The fact that students are back right now with mandatory, without mandatory weekly testing or temperature checks and you're expecting teachers to become frontline employees without vaccinations is so sad and shows that you have no empathy or concern for the well-being of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Jason Haddashin.
Mr. Haddashin, we see the clock, time is yours.
Right. So I'm the parent of two boys, uh, one a recent graduate of Brandywine High School and the other a current 11th grade student there. I'm also a practicing pediatrician and Delaware business owner. I'd like to thank everyone in the Brandywine School District and the school board members for their hard work and dedication during these difficult times. This summer, educators and pediatricians jointly supported an evidence-based return to in-person learning. The AAP, AFT, NEA and AASA released a joint statement in which they said in part, quote, "We recognize that children learn best when physically present in the classroom, but children get much more than academics at school. They also learn social and emotional skills at school, get healthy meals and exercise, mental health support and other services that cannot be easily replicated online. Schools also play a critical role in addressing racial and social inequity," end quote. Over the past year, as children in this district and others have been moved to virtual learning, I have seen the adverse effects firsthand. Children with behavioral, uh, health diagnoses and learning disabilities have been disproportionately affected by being online. Many of my adolescent patients are feeling isolated, unmotivated and disengaged. I've seen rates of anxiety, depression and sleep disorders increased significantly. I also am seeing worsening obesity and physical deconditioning. Many of my patients with physical occupational, speech or counseling needs have not had these needs met during this pandemic. Many public school parents in this district have also not had their needs or expectations met. Many are feeling overwhelmed as they attempt to supervise or arrange for supervision of their children while juggling new occupational and economic challenges. In the meantime, the gap widens as children in private schools and parochial schools across the region continue to attend school safely, fully in person. My younger son has attended two days of public school in 10 months. Yet my colleagues' children at local private and parochial schools have safely attended in-person school all year. In a joint letter from the governor and DPH on January 5th, state officials unequivocally stated that children should return to full hybrid learning across the state and Dr. Ratai pointed to medical evidence supporting this. I regret that the district did not find a path forward to return children to the classroom in August or September. I applaud the decision to provide hybrid learning now and see it as an imperative. I implore the board to stay the course and continue full hybrid learning with another quote from July's joint statement. Quote, "The pandemic has reminded so many what we have long understood that educators are invaluable in children's lives and that attending school in person offers children a wide array of health and educational benefits. For our country to truly value children, elected leaders must come together to appropriately support schools and safely returning students to the classroom and reopening schools." I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Haddashin. Ms. Harris, do we have anything else? Anyone else?
Rachel Blumenfield.
Ms. Blumenfield, you see the clock, time is yours.
Good evening. Many of you know me as an English teacher at Brandywine High School. Even though I teach English, I really like numbers and the numbers I'm seeing concern me. And I'm not talking about COVID numbers, I'm talking about the numbers regarding the students who are returning because those numbers unequivocally demonstrate that hybrid is a problematic educational model. When I look at the students returning to Brandywine High School, I notice some trends that give me pause. First, Brandywine High School has approximately 44% white students. Yet the students who are returning, 67% are white. Our school has about 41% black students, yet of the students who are returning, only 23% are black. When you look at the zip codes of our students who are returning, there's similar discrepancies. About 50% of the students from our district's wealthy zip codes with median household incomes of over $100,000 are coming back. But only about 15% of our students from the district's lower income zip codes with median household incomes closer to $50,000 are coming back. These numbers show that we need to seriously consider how we can best provide an education for all of our students, not just for the most privileged. I'm going to spare you the numbers about reduced class time because we've already talked about it. But what it means is that everybody loses. AP students now have 43% less class time to prepare for their exams that are quickly approaching. Students who are below grade level, who most need engaging effective classes, who are almost all still remote will have less class time for teachers to explain concepts and provide feedback to encourage them to keep trying, even though things are really, really hard. Students at home will have even less of the focus of their teachers because they now have to share it with students in the classroom instead of the teacher being able to easily monitor everyone at the same time and in the same way as we did with remote learning. And the students who are in person, the students who are at home interact with each other less. Teachers are now even more distracted from their remote students by writing bathroom passes, answering knocks on the door, phone calls from the office, wondering if Ryan's mask is too loose or Sarah seems like she's coming down with something. Hybrids, hybrid learning is being promoted as a way to increase the quality of education, to help ensure that students who struggle the most don't fall further behind and to provide valuable students with a safe space. But if you look at the numbers, you can see the hybrid model doesn't actually achieve those things. Instead, it's widening the achievement gap. It's leaving behind the students who need us the most. And let's not forget that it puts everyone in the building and their families at risk while doing so. Soon at even more risk with this new variant. And therefore I'm asking you tonight to please consider going back to remote, which is the best option for teaching all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blumenfield.
Tamika Pinkney.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Mr. Holder and Brandywine School District community. My name is Tamika Pinkney and I am a BSD alumni, a BSD eighth grade science teacher at Talley Middle School and a parent of a current BSD student. I've been told since I was three, all I wanted to do was to be a teacher. So imagine how I feel having to share some really conflicting personal feelings about hybrid. My first concern is the daily staff deficit we are already operating with. I am truly grateful and completely understand why some staff members are permitted to work remotely. However, this strains the staffing needs for the buildings. I don't know how other secondary buildings are dealing with the staff shortages, but in my building, if one teacher is out, it takes six other teachers to cover their hybrid students for one day. If day-to-day staff absences were stable and never changed, this would not be my first concern. Fluctuations in staff numbers will continue to stretch our, our infrastructure until it crumbles. Next is the daily health survey that employees are required to fill out and that parents are supposed to use to assess whether their child should come to school. For teachers, while thorough, I believe it encourages dishonesty. For example, employees who lack sufficient sick time or don't want the stigma that comes from being sent home or those who recognize the turmoil created in buildings by having yet another teacher absent are less likely to complete this form honestly. I've even heard students make comments about symptoms that they have on the daily health survey but are in the building. How is this keeping everyone safe? From the parenting perspective, what protocols do we actually have to truly ensure parents are seriously considering their children's symptoms before sending them to school? My final concern is the hybrid model itself. While remote, I had 80 minutes of instructional time for each of my six classes. Since starting hybrid, the class times have decreased by at least five minutes on paper in order to accommodate the schedule students need to follow in the building. However, I believe a true account would be a loss closer to 10 minutes, especially when you factor in the sudden lagginess of our Zoom meetings. Since teachers, all teachers have returned to the building, any building announcements, phone calls and making sure my classroom has been sanitized and getting students in two different settings situated. Besides the loss in time, I personally am struggling with ensuring that both sets of students are getting as much of my attention as possible. When we were remote, my class got 100%. Now hybrid, there is less time to make personalized connections and to make sure that I am helping students before rushing to the next duty. In addition, and additionally, with the PPE I wear, my personal protection and the blower from my ventilation system that is constantly running, I have to project my voice louder than my usual robust teacher voice. My final questions, are we going, are we just going through the motions and is this system currently, that is currently serving a quarter of my building's population more equitable and economical than staying remote? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pinkney.
David Bagni.
Mr. Bagni, when you see the clock, time is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Good evening, members of the board. I do want to say for the board's sake that the feelings you hear expressed tonight are not relegated to one building. It's throughout the whole district and every building, though some people don't feel comfortable speaking up. This is not a building issue, it is a district and statewide issue. Uh, tonight I'm going to address a few things, but I actually changed. Tonight, I'm going to address a few things, but I actually change this up a lot as the meeting has gone on. I want to address the idea that schools are safe. Schools are not safe. Kids are way more likely to be asymptomatic, which means all of these studies that DPH and the governor cite saying schools are safe are faulty. They depend on people usually with symptoms getting tested. When an adult, for example, let's call him James, is feeling sick, he goes and gets tested, and he tests positive for COVID, and then everyone else in the house gets tested and they test positive for COVID. The assumption is made that James was the index case who brought it into the house because he tested positive first. However, randomized testing of all ages shows kids are just as likely as adults to test positive, but much more likely to be asymptomatic. This means that they are very likely, more kids are the index case, AKA the ones who brought it into the home, than some of our current studies show. And the studies that are meant to prove that actually show that kids are actually more likely to be the index case than adults in a home. Also, the six-feet rule we are using for contact tracing is outdated considering that it is an aerosolized virus that will float in the air beyond six feet and linger in the air for hours after the person exhaling it has left the room. I think that's important to note. Also, the support for return to in-person school from doctors groups was hinged on the very important caveat of when community spread is low. Community spread is not low right now. To add to this, the new COVID variant is not only 50% more infectious, but new data coming out of Great Britain suggests it is 30% deadlier, which the CDC is now following up on as of today. Our old non-pharmaceutical interventions are no longer good enough. So if you can find data on both sides, that gets you to the best conclusion of we don't know for sure either way. So if we don't know for certain, you have to ask yourself the question, is the risk worth taking? Are the results you're getting by taking that risk actually overall positive? If you can't answer yes definitively, then you're risking other people's health on a what-if. Yes, children are suffering. Everyone's mental health is suffering. Trust me, I know. But it's not just isolation that causes mental health problems. Losing a loved one or a mentor or a teacher to this virus also impacts children's mental health. And I've had way too many kids messaging me this year telling me they're missing class for a funeral. I want to say I chose to give my life and my career to teaching other people's children. It's what I love to do, but I also love being able to play with my little boy and go on hikes with them and play sports with them. And what this virus has shown is that it can take away people's ability to do that with their long-term impact on lungs and heart and brain. And the percentage of people it does that to is higher than the percentage of people that have died. And that number is already way too high as this community can speak to directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagnoni.
Alex Breck.
Ms. Breck, time is yours.
Good evening, board members. I have to be honest, my stomach is in knots listening to this conversation. I am troubled by the conversation that the board has had today. But I also want to thank Board Member Pigeon for her question. What about the choice for our teachers? What about choices for our teachers? Students have choices. Three of our board members have choices. Our teachers are forced into the buildings to teach both, to teach hybrid learning. As a contact tracer for the state, since January 11th, the day schools went back to hybrid learning, I can't tell you how many students and teachers I have interviewed who have either been exposed to the virus or have tested positive. They tell me that their primary source of exposure is from school. Students and teachers can still be exposed at schools when students and teachers unknowingly bring the virus into the school. They can also still be exposed even when both parties are wearing masks. If this experiment fails, that means people are sick. People are bringing home the virus to family members. People could be put in the hospital. People can die. This isn't just a failed curriculum series that you can choose another one. These are people's lives. You are playing with people's lives, and it's clearly not working. I will not stop fighting for the life of my mother and the lives of the students and staff that you are putting at risk. I am fearful every time my mother walks into one of your buildings that she will get sick and she will not come home to me because you are giving her no choice to stay home and protect her health. This is not how any family member should feel, especially in this community. It's time to put your, to admit that you are wrong, to put your community first and return to remote learning. That is the safest way we can all be safe until this vaccine is admitted to people and until this community can be fully protected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Breck.
Samantha Stronach.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the board and Superintendent Hohler, first of all, thank you for your time and for listening to our concerns tonight. And I also want to mention, I really appreciate the board members that have backed up the teachers tonight and our concerns. My name's Samantha Stronach and I'm a third-grade teacher at Maple Lane Elementary. I'm speaking tonight to share my experience with hybrid learning. My students and I returned to school for hybrid learning on November 30th. My anxiety was high coming back into the classroom, but I knew that I didn't have much of a choice. I made sure that proper PPO protection was worn by students and myself and that we maintained social distancing and that we were consistently following hand-washing protocols. During that first week of instruction, I sent a student to the nurse complaining of a stomach ache. The student was sent home and was diagnosed two days later with COVID. I would also like to point out that the parent of the child stated that they were not around anyone that they could contract COVID from. I later found out that this was not the case and that the child had been outside playing with other students that attend our school. The following week, I began to show symptoms and was diagnosed with COVID at the end of the week. I followed the proper protocols and still ended up contracting the virus. I speak tonight for the teachers across the districts that are concerned about being back in the classroom, and my story gives them every right to be concerned. I've heard time and time again that our motto across the district is, "We are all in this together." If we truly are all in this together, let's start listening to the concerns of the teachers and staff. We want to be back in the classroom so badly, but only when it's safe to do so. I'm asking Mr. Hohler and the board to please consider sending us back online until teachers receive the vaccine. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stronach. And it looks like that is all of our Zoom public comments, so we will now go to speakers in the room. I believe we have microphones in the setup here, two stations, and we will start with Karen Kennedy.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Hohler, School Board. Thanks for being here. Thanks for listening to all of us. I appreciate some of the comments from the board members. So we've moved into hybrid again. This started in October, and it was a slow and gradual process with a few students and a few teachers, and it's grown. It's growing exponentially, and so could the virus, especially with this new strain coming out of the UK. The vaccination is around the corner. And I'm requesting, and here's my fear too. You showed the numbers in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland, where less than 1% of the population has been vaccinated. I'm urging you not only to consider going back to remote until we can get vaccinated, but to put some pressure on the governor to get our 1B group vaccinated so that we can get back into school and can get the kids back in, and we can be safer than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Do we have a timer in the room here or on the screen? Next up, we have Farah Texan. Farah Texan?
Farah Texan had to leave. Her question was about the number of minutes of instructional time, and I think it's been addressed.
Thank you. They'll take us to Matthew Hoops.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking tonight to you as a parent, a teacher, a coach, an alumni, and a son. I want to express my opinion about hybrid learning and why I want to continue. I have two sons that are in the district. One is at Hamby Elementary School and the other is at Springer. They both were absolutely positively devastated last spring when they had to go on remote learning, but completely understood why. It was understandable. As the summer rolled on and the opportunity for remote learning continued, and we weren't going to be going back and there was not going to be any hybrid, the look on my first grader's face was unbelievable. I didn't know what to tell him. How do you lie to your seven-year-old? You don't. You tell them the truth. It's dangerous. We can't do this. I get it. As time went on, we became, the plan started going in place, and the idea of what the nurses have been doing has been great. I want to thank the chief at Concord High School. I know I'm going a little out of order, and the chief at all the buildings for doing what they can do to get this thing ready and rolling. I myself, as a teacher, I find it really hard not to want to be able to put my children in the school, put my seventh, my sixth grader at Springer with his instrument and get him in there. He's never even been in the building. Get him into the building and then not be able to myself do my job for the parents that want to have their children in the building. I know what my job is. I want to do my job. I want to do it as safe as possible. My kids are, they know how to wash their hands. They're wearing their masks. We're doing our best. I think I'm putting forward the best instruction I can for the opportunity that I have. I mean, this isn't perfect, and the instructional time, I'm not happy about that. I got to be honest with you. But you got to give a little to get a little. I'm willing to give a little bit of that to get my kids back in the building. They need the socialization piece of this badly. I need the socialization piece. I'm also a coach. I got 28 young men that swim for me all the time and will do anything I ask them to do. I pulled one of them out of the water today and had a 45-minute conversation with him about his emotional state because it wasn't good. That means something. If I didn't have him and he didn't have me today, I don't know where he would be today. That matters. Every day it matters. I'm also, my father is 81 years old. I got him vaccinated on Sunday. Waited in one of those crazy lines. I have a lot of fat in this game, and I just want to make sure that we do it right. I want to do it right, but I'm willing to go and do this this way. I know I'm not making a lot of friends tonight, and that's going to have to be that way because my kids want to go back to school. I want my kids back in school. I want to be in school, and I want to continue to do my job the way I was intended to do it. So the best of my ability. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Hoops. Next up, we have John Schraup.
Good evening. Thanks to the board for, you know, working through what's essentially an unwinnable situation. You're realizing that. You're just not going to please everybody. I'm a parent of two district kids. I'm a teacher, a coach in the district. So I'm coming as a parent first. I'll say that quite frankly, and as a teacher as well. And I'm coming in support of continuing in-person learning, but also with real concerns over the new schedule and the trouble that that schedule offers in regard to allowing our kids to compete with other kids in the private schools, the publics here or in Pennsylvania, wherever. I'm not cavalier. I understand the concerns over COVID, and I respect the concerns of teachers. You know, you got to meet people where they are quite often because people have different fears and they have different comfort levels, and they're legitimate. Many people are worried, and I understand that, and I don't belittle that in any way. Others are willing to come to school, not cavalierly like nothing's going to happen to us, but kind of willing to do it. And it'd be great, I think Ms. Pigeon mentioned, if a happy medium could be found with teachers that would feel more comfortable at home, certainly. But I feel good. I'm back. I feel good being back, and I respect the diligence of our district. And certainly seems like you're doing your homework. I mean, people can throw stats around all the time, but it certainly sounds like it. Just around the corner, you know, the vaccine will be ready just around the corner for everybody, and we'll be back just around the corner. I mean, last March, if you would have asked anybody now, you're going to be still at home in the end of January? It sounded absurd, and, you know, the emotional toll that it's taken on kids, and I know this on a personal level, and it's partly why I'm talking tonight. It's good for my children to be in school. Even losing that instructional time, it pains me as an academic guy. It pains me to know that Archmere is in five days a week, you know, and the privates are in. Garnett Valley's in, you know, like Owen J. Roberts is in up in PA, and it bothers me, the reduced schedule. But on an emotional level, a lot of kids are suffering and badly, and I thank Matt for mentioning that. And so it's, you know, it's on those issues that I come, and I just, I'm ready. I'm back, and I want to be back, and I respect those who are worried all the way. But many of us do want to be back and are ready to go back. And in regard to the new schedule, I don't know if it's possible, but I'd love to see the district reconsider. You're going from 80-minute classes to 64-minute classes with a massive two-hour break in the middle of the day. I mean, we got to do something to add more minutes to the classroom because our kids are taking the same SATs, AP tests. They're going to the same community colleges. They're walking into the work world for the same training programs as kids who are having far more minutes. So we got to stay back and we got to fix that schedule. I got to be honest with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schraup. Next, we have Deb McGill.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to speak in support of in-person instruction. I'm the parent of two Brandywine High School students who were so happy to be in the building last week and reported that even though it was different, it was so much better than being remote. As data from overseas and domestic school districts who participated in in-person instruction are emerging, we're learning more and more about COVID transmission and the impacts of that transmission from robust studies in reputable journals. We're learning that in-person instruction has not resulted in increased transmission and often less than community-based transmission. And more importantly, we're learning about the relative risks of the morbidity and mortality of COVID from these transmissions. There's nothing in life that's without risk. Relative risk ratios of COVID morbidity and mortality are similar to some other more common respiratory illnesses on an age-adjusted basis from global disease burden studies. We're also learning about the impact of school closures on the mental health, sleep, activity, estimated years of life lost from a variety of causes associated with school closures, and none of that data is trending towards a positive impact on our students. So I would implore you to follow the science from robust, reputable sources and to continue to provide and even expand, as our last speaker mentioned, if at all possible, the additional instructional time would be great, our in-person learning opportunities for all of our students, of course, with appropriate accommodations for those students and teachers with health-related needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGill. Next up, we have Dr. Darcy Reesman.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Darcy Reesman, and I'm an educator and a parent of a student in Brandywine High School. And I want to echo a lot of the comments that were made here tonight, but I want to layer on. I'm a scientist. The science is not equivocal right now. There was a large study that was just completed and released on January 4th from the National Center for Research on Education Access and Choice. They found that for counties whose preopening total new COVID-19 hospitalization rates were below 36 to 44 per 100,000 per week, there was no effect of in-person school reopening on COVID hospitalization rates. This was a large national study and the best of its kind. Newcastle County is and has been below this rate since the start of COVID. Newcastle County is and has been below this rate since the start of COVID. Evaluating based on hospitalizations is incredibly important because it is a more valid and reliable measure that is not likely to be affected by whether schools reopen, unlike other measures such as positivity rate, which complicate the interpretation. So I understand that the concerns...
Anyone else lose audio?
Getting messages that they can't hear on the Zoom. Sorry to stop, sorry to stop you. I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to hear you. Try again. Step up.
Hello?
Yeah, just maybe stand a little closer to the mic.
Hello?
No, they can hear me but not the speaker, John.
No, we can hear her now.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay.
Can we add to, add minute 30 to the clock, please?
So I, I understand, I understand fully everybody's fears and I also understand that there is no good solution. We're in a very difficult position. But I want to be very, very clear. When it comes to the data and the science, as many have pointed out here tonight, it is not in question that when the, when the hospitalization rates are below the numbers reported, 36 to 44, which we have been in Newcastle County, opening schools does not increase COVID hospitalizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reesman. I apologize for the interruptions. And that concludes our public comment. Does anyone need to take a recess? Five-minute recess? No, then we will press on. Moving on to board reports. Delaware School Board Association, Mr. Ackerman.
Yeah, the Delaware School Board Association Executive Board's meeting was scheduled for the first week of January. Based on the governor's pause to schools, we decided we would also not hold the January meeting. So our next meeting for the executive board will be in March.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Delaware School Board Association Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Gordon, are you muted? We'll come back to Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee. District Finance Committee held its monthly meeting on Wednesday, January 13th. We reviewed the fiscal year 21 operating budget, monthly financial report and financial position report, all of which will be presented shortly. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 10th at 5:00 PM. Maintenance Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
Yeah, we didn't meet because of the holiday. Our next meeting's February 2nd at Hamby.
I think, Ms. Gordon, are you back with us?
I am. Apologize. I could not get unmuted. The Legislative Committee has not met since our last board meeting, but is due to meet the evening of February 3rd. You did receive via board docs and email response to Senate Bill 19 that Dr. Marinucci had sent after receiving concerns and suggestions from Legislative Committee members. The bill seeks to make homeschooled students eligible for speech and audiology services. The concern was that the bill was an unfunded mandate and it was required that districts would have to fund it locally. Dr. Marinucci's recommendation was an inclusion of state funding to support the services to these students, not to deny them. If any of our board members have additional concerns or suggestions, please do contact me before the February 3rd meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pigeon.
Hi. So the Parent Council met last week. Dr. Nicole Warner led the meeting. It was on Zoom and she opened the meeting with a welcome activity and then had some discussions and a presentation, which is available on the Brandywine School District website. She also is adding the minutes of the meeting and the presentations under Learning and BSD in the parent, all the Parent Council updates will be there from now on. Interesting for the board, we had a brief discussion about unfinished learning and recovery services for students with disabilities and potentially without disabilities. I guess there's a team working to assess what unfinished learning and recovery services would look like due to the pandemic and moving forward, when would those services be taking place? And what would that look like for the summer programming, any changes to curriculum? And access for the students to receive those services may be different. And there was a question about whether there would, a remote option would remain for summer, summer programming for unfinished learning. And I think that hasn't yet been answered, but the team will be working on that. Dr. Lawson, do you have, or is Dr. Warner available if there's anything else to add? I guess not.
Is that all for you, Kristen?
That's all for me.
Thank you. Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry.
The Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee met last Thursday, the 21st. Our meeting consisted of a presentation of the proposed early childhood center donation, excuse me, report. And we discussed three things in the overall presentation. For those who may or may not be aware, the Capano Development Group plans to, there is, there is discussion concerning a land donation to the Brandywine School District of 45 acres of land for an early education childhood center. We discussed the whys, the benefits of all stakeholders, and then we concluded with Q and A. The why, some of the whys are the capacity issue that we experienced district-wide. And we discussed the, the limited options that we have available to our families. And because we are consistently at capacity, we are limited in our ability to provide a full-day program for all children. We also discovered that we have a number of children who are not currently being serviced at all to the tune of 50% of three-to-four-year-olds without, within our district are currently not enrolled in any pre-K program at all. And the recommendations from study done by the Hanover Group were, the recommendations were to increase outreach programs, target families in the 19809 zip code and to be aggressive and to focus on meeting the needs of those in the 19802 zip code. I've been, some of the benefits for our stakeholders is that as a district, we would prefer to have all of our children being housed in one location. A special, because of our special designation, we will receive 100% state funding. There is some concerns by some of, some citizens regarding maintaining an open space. And so for that reason, we are dedicating 20 to 25 acres of the land to open space. It can be a shared community space as we do with other BSD properties. It also helps to alleviate the achievement gap that currently exists in certain populations. We'll also be able to provide much-needed wraparound services. And then finally, we'll be fulfilling our commitment to serve families in greatest need. And so again, we concluded the meeting with Q and A and many discuss, many expressed their support and them being in favor of this particular concept. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. I just want to jump in before we go, Dr. Zarek. I'm getting word here that we had one public comment speaker who had signed up on, signed up on Zoom but ended up showing up in person. Ms. Schumacher here? One second, not yet, not yet. I want to finish the board reports and then I'll call on you. Please, do we have an extra card to fill out? We still have a card? Just make sure we fill out a card and then we'll touch base after the board reports. Dr. Zarek?
The Health Advisory Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we did host a COVID-19 vaccine educational webinar for the Brandywine School District teachers and staff last Tuesday on January 19th. Over 250 staff participated. Two Brandywine School District nurses helped present with Dr. David Donahue, who is an amazing speaker, and I'm not just saying that because he's my husband. He really is. They presented information on vaccine development, safety, efficacy, side effects and contraindications. Our committee has set up the same talk to be given by the Brandywine School District nurses and Dr. Donahue this coming Thursday on January 28th at 7:00 PM for the community. The webinar link for Zoom is on the Brandywine School District website. Our next meeting is planned for Wednesday, February 17th.
Thank you, Dr. Zarek. 91.7 WMPH did not meet this month. We will have our quarterly, quarterly meeting with a date to be determined. Any additional board member reports or comments? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so now we'll go back to one final public comment and, like I said, Sandy Schumaker. She was signed up on the Zoom, so we will hear your comments now.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion. Good evening, board members and Mr. Hohler. I am Sandy Schumaker. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Hamby Elementary. And yes, you just did approve my retirement at the end of June. But I am still teaching. I am very happy to be teaching and I'm just here tonight to just reiterate some of the things that have been said by other members. First of all, I applaud all of my fellow teachers. I really appreciate the opinions of the parents, but I am here to speak as a teacher. I would like to say that a school setting is like no other. And as a teacher, I want to emphasize that teachers did not create this pandemic and its disruption to education as we know it. Yet it has felt to me as if teachers are constantly being blamed to make us feel like we did in fact cause this pandemic and causing education to not be the way it was. Science is still saying, please follow the CDC guidelines with the recommendation of not socializing indoors with people that you don't live with. So for me in a hybrid setting, I'm now in a classroom with less than one-third of my students in person. The two-thirds on Zoom, I am masked up all day in an elementary setting from 8:30 to 11:30 or noon if we have indoor recess and then again from 12:30 to 2:30. All the while, teaching on Zoom to my students while teaching in person in a mask. And I just need to say, I find it totally ironic that the people telling us schools are safe and that teachers need to be teaching in person are not teachers themselves. There is evidence, absolutely, that children need to be there in person. None of us is debating that. I am here talking about the safety, especially since the vaccine is about to be a reality. We had just asked for a little bit of patience and letting us be a little bit, a couple more weeks out. Every teacher I know truly, honestly does want to be with their students. There's also an issue in Zoom that I don't think anybody realized. There is now no privacy when you are in hybrid. Those children sitting in front of you are hearing everything you say. While we became the PhDs of Zoom, we could take our students into breakout rooms. We could work in small groups and nobody heard what we were saying. However, every student in your room sitting in front of you now hears everything you say to our other students. So when we are working with our struggling students, every single student in the room is hearing that conversation. So again, I just ask for your support, kindness and understanding. I thank you so much for listening to us and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Schumaker, and thank you, board members, for your reports. Consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Student Matters, Personnel Matters, sorry. Personnel Matters. Do I have a motion to approve monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Student Matters. Do I have a motion to approve Student Matters as discussed in executive session?
They're all moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Old Business, Juul Lawsuit. September of last year was brought to our attention by the Delaware School Boards Association of a potential class action lawsuit related to Juul smoking and vaping devices and with regards to their marketing practices, product safety and the effects on minors. We asked the board and district to consider joining this class action suit. The board has reviewed the associated documents, fee agreement, talking points, PowerPoint. There is no cost to the district. All fees collected would be upon a successful case. Legal counsel has reviewed the fee agreement and given their blessing. Superintendent Hohler, is it your recommendation that we participate in this suit?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a motion from the board to join the Juul class action lawsuit?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the matter? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. New Business. Tonight's agenda, we have an agreement between the Brandywine School District Board of Education and the Brandywine Education Association and their parent organizations. Do I have a motion to accept this agreement?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. We have a draft of the 2223 school calendar, first read. Is anybody here to speak to that or are we just going to review that and it will come before the board at a next meeting? Okay, everyone has a copy of that. Please review the calendar. And any questions? Reach out to, who do we reach out to?
Ms. Lavina Davis-Jones.
Lavina Davis-Jones, great. And then this will come back before the board for a vote in the future. Next, financial reports. Dr. Hale on the line. Would you please present the fiscal year 21 operating budget, monthly financial report and the financial position report? Ms. Harris, we have Dr. Hale in the Zoom. Ms. Harris, we have Dr. Hale in the Zoom.
Good evening, everyone.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Can everybody see my screen there?
Yes.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, I'll take some time to review. What we have here is the final draft of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget. Certainly, if there's any questions along the way, please let me know. This is a second read. We presented the information at the board meeting last month and asked if there were any questions or anything. I've had a couple conversations throughout the month. Really have not been many modifications to this. So I figured it would take a few minutes to just kind of go through some of the major points of the budget. And then if there are any questions, we can, we can proceed from there. So the information that we have on our, on our first page called our executive summary just lists through the highlights of this budget. So what we're saying here is that we're anticipating that at the end of fiscal year that we will have a carryforward balance of roughly $10.8 million. And you'll see that in the actual document moving forward. So that represents roughly an increase of about 2.8% over last year. We indicated that our enrollment has decreased this year over last year by 143 students. You'll see when we go through the information, I'm kind of where that is along the way. Our charter school enrollments and choice charter information has been relatively consistent. Our district, as opposed to many of the other districts in Newcastle County, really our, our decrease was significantly less than what many of the other districts saw throughout the state. So we're very pleased to see that though it was a decrease, it was not nearly as significant as other districts in the state. We did fall below our 98% of our enrollment. What that means is that there was a circuit breaker put in effect by the state regulations that we were guaranteed a 98% amount of our units for this year. We're also fortunate that we're able to work with the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Education to secure some additional funding due to the enrollment reduction. So we were able to secure in addition roughly $700,000 from the state for the Brandywine School District. We're very pleased about that. In this budget, there is roughly three. Yes.
Connection, is there any way for you to expand that on your screen a little bit, the document?
I mean, yes, I can do that. Is that better?
If you can go more, if you keep going.
Sure. Is that good?
Two more clicks.
Two more clicks.
Well, maybe one more. Back down one.
Back down one.
Now center.
There we go. There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, perfect. So we are right in here. So the one-time funding that we received from the Office of Management and Budget was $700,138. So that's a, and that's a one-time funds that, that we received due to the statewide loss in enrollment through the unit count process. So we will again be working, if we're able to use that, those funds much like we would any of our Division II funds. We received $3.7 million this year in COVID stimulus funding. So that will be outlined within the budget as well. And that's being used for, I mean, really everything from technology, safety, PPE, equipment, distance learning, all kinds of supplies, materials, and equipment, curriculum materials. I mean, that's something that we will continue because there's going to be another amount of funds coming in for next year or really be, I guess, for the spring going into next year. That could be a good bit more than that. Other important things to know is that, you know, we continue to maintain our $3.2 million reserve, emergency reserve per our, our section 4.9 of the board policy. So everything is in line there with as it should be. The next several pages of the budget outline things such as how we generate our property taxes. And again, I won't go into great detail on this, but each of the components of our taxes outlined and exactly how much is generated from each of them and how the calculation is performed. And that includes the tax district in Newcastle County, which is, you know, the first 46.8 cents and how that's distributed amongst the four school districts in the northern Newcastle County. All of our rates have maintained the same this year. As you know, there was no increase in, in tax. So each of these, of these taxes represent the same as it's been over the last couple of years. And, and this information shows exactly how those funds are generated and what exactly they are for. Going further into the description, we talked about the Division I, II, and III salaries. Again, this is a, a piece of this budget that many school districts do not have, meaning this narrative portion. So I find that it's, it's, does provide a lot of information. We do get questions from time to time on these and we will make modifications based on some of the suggestions that we get. We also talk about our federal funding and exactly how each of the title grants, what exactly they're used for. And as we see in the budget further along, we'll see exactly how much money we generate from each of them. We also talked about the District Finance Committee, how it was developed back in 2001 as well as our budget calendar. And we did make note within this budget calendar that would normally takes place in September, being the, the unit count did take place this year in November. So that's something that we made the modification for, but will be shifted back to a September 30th next year. So the first several pages of the actual numbers portion of the budget shows the difference between the FY '20 and FY '21 budget and the differences. And you'll see that on the far right-hand side, this information has not changed much since the, the prior information that you saw. In total, our state portion of funding that we're going to receive is $92.2 million. So our total discretionary funding as well as state is 176.4. So that's up from about $1.3 million from the year before. In all of our other categories, being our tuition tax as well as our other funds and debt service and the technology funds, you can see the differences from last year to this year on those budgets, which for the most part are minimal. Some of the areas that we do see increases on here, it would be under these federal and other funds. These three categories right here would be the, the COVID relief funding that we received. So there as well as the Newcastle County funding that we received would represent roughly that $3.7 million that we discussed earlier in that narrative. So all of that information has been included in this document and has been budgeted. This page represents exactly how the taxes are generated. We do budget based on 99.5% of our, our projected revenue. And that's, that's been something that we've done for the last several years. We find that provides a conservative estimate. So the objective would be that hopefully we would come in over that and for the last several years we have. But we find that that 99.5% from a budget perspective provides a little bit of flexibility for us. So that's something that we have continued to do over the last several years. So this portion here is the actual, the actual budget itself. On the, on the far right-hand side, you can see the difference between last year and this year and exactly what's made up of that. So in total, the difference between last year is you see an increase of a roughly $5.8 million with, with a good piece of that being the additional funding that we received, this $3.7 million here in the COVID cares and gear funding, which is all stimulus funding. Other than that, we see relatively consistent budget over last year. So there has not been much change. So even in total on the salary and other employee costs, only an increase of about $1.1 million over, over last year. So everything looks to be very consistent with where we were last year. We did find ourselves slightly under budget last year. So that's the reason why we're not seeing more of a significant increase in expenditures is because we've been able to kind of forecast that to be a little bit closer this year. So very pleased to say that the important number here is, is that $10.8 million carryforward. So that's what we're anticipating to be on June 30th of 2021. So that's a, a significant number for us. And that's something that we continue to look at because as that number gets down closer to that $8 million number is where we would then need to begin to consider going to referendum. These next several pages are basically just a larger view of each of the columns above just to show you exactly where those funds are coming from. Each of these pages would tie directly into that, that, that recap budget that, that you see up top. So each of these do provide just a little bit more of, I guess, a larger scale view of what you see above. Our budget summary page shows the total revenues and total expenditures for each of those categories. Again, you can see 10.8 million is where we fall here. And that's, if you look at last year, we had anticipated roughly a 10.1. So we're actually anticipating a slight increase over, over last year's budget. The last piece of the expenditure portion of this budget is each of these, these detailed operating unit program code summaries. So each of these boxes here represents a line in that, in that overall budget. So you can see in greater detail what each line is made up of. And this is something that we're only one of few districts that do this. And we find that it's, provides a lot of additional detail to the members of the community to be able to see exactly what each of those operating areas is, is, is a made up of. And I won't go through these in great detail as we have reviewed these in detail over the last several months during the District Finance Committee. And certainly as we report on them on a monthly basis, as we get questions, we address them. Finally, the last several pages of the budget have to do with enrollment. You can see that our overall enrollment for the last 10 years is being listed. And we do that for each building as well as each of our needs categories as well as units and to show where the fluctuations are from one year to the next. And it's where you can see for this year, our total number is 10,405, which is the decrease of 143. We also show our grade configuration changes over the last 10 years as well as our choice and charter. Our choice numbers are we are still considerably larger net importer than we are exporter of choice students. And you can see by 353, and that number has fluctuated right around that over the last several years. Last year, where his high is 395. And then interestingly, for our charter school enrollment, we are exactly the same. So as we've talked about during the finance, this is the first time in 10 years that we have not seen an increase in the number of charter school students going out of the Brandywine School District. Now, it's not going down, but you know, I guess it's a tie. But still, at the same time, we're not seeing an increase as we have over the last several years. This information was reviewed in detail again at the District Finance Committee meeting last week where it was recommended to bring it to the board for approval. And I would take this time to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Dr. Hale, in the beginning, you mentioned that the state has a backstop on previous year's enrollment. I think it's at 98%?
Yes.
So next year, is that 98% number based off of this year's actual numbers or based off of 98% number of previous year?
So what they're going to do next year is they, normally what they would look at is the previous three years. So what we've, in discussions with them, have gotten the department to agree to do is to not look at this year. So we're going to go back the prior three years, not including this year. But we also, what we're able to do is to provide justification as to why we think our enrollments will go up. So they are prepared because they do expect to see a larger-than-average kindergarten class coming. And then there's certainly some concerns as there could be repeaters. That's something that when we do our spring estimated counts, I would fully anticipate seeing the number go up considerably from this year. You know, even more so than, than, than where we were last year. So they are prepared for that as we've been continuing to tell them that that's really what we're going to be coming to them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the operating budget? Like no other questions, you want to move on to the financial report?
Sure. Now, would you do an approval of all, do you want to do the approval at each step of the way? Or wait, wait until?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Do you want to approve the budget first before I go on or do you?
I was going to do all three at the end.
Okay, that's fine. So next is the December 31st, 2020 monthly report. We'll all do the same thing. So to date, we have about 87% of our state revenue received through December. And now that the unit count has been finalized, we'll begin to see the remainder of the funds come in. And we have been seeing that over the course of the last month. Our total property taxes received is roughly 98%. So that's good. We're right in line with where we are in years past. So fully anticipate that we'll be at 100 or above by the end of the year. We've also made all of our transactions for our charter payments with the exception of, of, I believe, one or two. So we're right in line there and we're still anticipating the final state transfer for the balance of the choice fund. So as it relates to revenue, we're in good shape. We're keeping a very close eye on interest. As anticipated, we do see the rate has been going down pretty steadily over the last couple of months. But we're still in the line to easily hit that 100% by the end of the year. We've also received our federal funds. So we're in the process right now. The only one that we hadn't had as of the time of this report was Title II, which we do have it now. So that's something that we continue to work through and we're going to be, you know, we're already in the process of, of spending that money. The expenditure report, everything is doing well. And I had mentioned during the finance committee that the principals have been doing an amazing job as well as all the division directors and being very good about spending their budget. You can see that there's a considerable balance at the halfway point with the buildings. And they have been spending as needed. And it's been something, just because the money's there, they're not spending it. So they have been very good about ensuring that they're purchasing all the equipment and, and instructional materials and things that they need. Now, as it relates to safety and, and COVID-related things, we have been making those purchases under either the facilities and in most instances, under our, our COVID cares expenditure line. So we have not been having the buildings make those, those major purchases. So we continue to look at these, but all of the budget lines are in very good shape at this point. And we'll continue to monitor those as we do each day. Our salary now, we see line, we're at roughly 52.3% local. At this point in the year, we would be roughly 53.8. So we're about a percent and a half under budget on our local salaries, which is good. So that's something that we will continue to monitor as well. Our prior year expenditure information, and again, these are all of the expenditures that are taking place in appropriations that are fiscal year 20 or earlier. In this report, you can see that, you know, these encumbrances will stay. And as we move farther along in the year, for any of those, those appropriations that were awarded to us that were not 21, will all show up on this page. Lastly, is our cash flow analysis report. And this report again changes every month based on the level of income and expenditures that we have. So as of the time that this report was generated, I have us at roughly $10.8 million, which is right in line with where we are on our operating budget. Now, again, that number over the course of the next several months, the idea of this report is that it's really a real-time report. So that number could shift slightly over the course of next several months. So as we continue to receive those tax dollars, that could then also shift that number. But not knowing 100% how the expenditures will flow over the next six months, I do anticipate the number actually probably coming in higher than that. I could definitely see us in the low 11 million mark number. But at this point, I, I feel better right around that 10.8 in hopes that we could see that number bounce a little bit higher than that. And this final page here is just an overall summary. I mean, all of this information, if the, if the budget is approved, will be adjusted to reflect the information that was on the final budget. This was also reviewed in detail at the finance, during the finance committee and has been recommended for approval.
Any questions for Dr. Hale on this?
I just have a question, not completely related, but the, the, the free breakfast and lunch program that was approved, I think it was USDA, is that all through federal funds, number one? And does that also include all the related costs? And does that also include all the related costs like transportation to provide those meals?
So the, meaning for the, the community feeding program that we're in right now?
Yes.
So, I mean, the information that we get, it's really, it's based on, and I can get the, the exact information from Colleen for you, but we get a certain amount per meal. So the expenses that we have based on our, our programming expenses for personnel and transportation, it all kind of works within that, but it's not a direct reimbursement of dollar to dollar. You know, we get the funds based on the meals and then kind of have, have to work it through. So I mean, it's no secret throughout the state that the school nutrition programs have been hurting a bit, and that's been more so because of not having the, the, the students in the building for what we call à la carte sales, which would be those, all of those, you know, the, the actual meals themselves is not really an income-producing item for the schools. A lot of it has to do with the other things that are sold, whether it be, you know, like cookies and, and ice cream and like those sorts of things through the à la carte sales. So what we're hoping is going to happen is, you know, once we get back, all of that will kind of begin to regenerate itself back. But all throughout the state, the, the, the schools programs have been having to dip into those, those balances that they've taken years to generate. So that's something that we're going to continue to look at as we receive additional stimulus funding, because those are certainly programs that have been impacted pretty significantly.
Anyone else comments? Does that leave us with the financial position report?
Yes, that's the list. This is the report that we're required to send to the department every. I'm sorry about that. Shoot, I did it again. Sorry. The financial position report is required to be filed to the department every quarter to show that we have sufficient funds to get us through October of next year. So based on the information, there's a, included in the report is the detail of this report to show what makes up each of these. And you can see here that we're reporting that in total, all, all available funds would be roughly $17.6 million, which is certainly sufficient for us through October 15th of next year. And we did review this also in detail during the DFC meeting, and it's been recommended for approval.
Any questions? All right, so going back to, do I have a motion to accept the fiscal year 21 financial operating budget subject to audit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the financial, monthly financial report subject to audit?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the financial position report subject to audit?
I'm moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. And I think. Do you have anything else to add?
Excuse me, I do, Mr. President. It's been brought to my attention that I had an error in my report that I do need to point out. So Ms. Scott, if you could allow me to share my screen again, I would appreciate it.
You should be able to.
There we go. You'll notice that the title of this slide is hybrid learning percent of hybrid versus total student enrollment. And the title of the next slide is exactly the same, but yet shows different information. I left out this, this slide should be hybrid learning percent of hybrid versus total student population in cohort one. And then there should be a second slide, this one that has cohort two, followed by the attendance pattern. So when we look at Carcroft, there are 132 students enrolled for cohort one. I don't have the data for cohort two with me. So back to Reverend Perry's question on the number of actual students, it's 30% of the student body present that day, and there could be 30% present on cohort two day, which would give you a total of 60% of the student body taking advantage of hybrid. So my apologies, I will get this corrected tomorrow. I'll send the board a copy, and we'll also send this out to parents and staff members so that we've covered everybody who was in the audience this night, tonight. And I'll include a brief explanation of the omitted data.
And maybe that's a good clarification. I appreciate you bringing that back up and maybe one of the alert five messages to highlight that distinction.
Absolutely, and I thank Ms. Scott for being on top of it, as she always is, and making sure that I was aware.
Fantastic.
Mr. Holder, can I, I just want to say thank you for bringing that to our attention because I was already composing an email to you to kind of ask for clarification because I actually took a screenshot and I said, this just doesn't quite jive with the information that we received in board docs on January 8th. So now I can sleep a little better knowing that the information is pretty consistent.
Yeah, I'd blame it on old age.
And if nothing else to add, general information and future meeting dates, our board will meet on February 22nd and following again on March 15th. And unless anybody has anything else to add, I will entertain motion to adjourn.
Can I just ask one more thing? Sorry.
Just got it in under the wire.
Mr. Holder, just because you had mentioned this, could you post a copy of this presentation? I know it will go into the minutes as a video, but if you could post a copy of the presentation in board docs, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Or an email, either way.
Yep, absolutely.
And John, can I just take one minute, please?
Sure.
I've hesitated to speak because of my background with the Brandywine School District, both as a teacher and as a person who is active with the teachers' union. But I have to express my concerns of both students and teachers. And I realize how difficult it has been for parents and some students when they were under remote learning. But I don't know how much people are aware of what teachers had to do to get themselves ready for that, the professional development that was involved. So I wanted to thank all of our teachers for the amount of time they've given and their move to move our students' education forward. And I wish there was a way we could give them a choice.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. General meeting dates, we were at motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, have a second? Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time, everyone.